4:31. Let's see, so I will call the meeting to order per remote attendance pursuant to the state executive orders, which are listed in the agenda. I do want to welcome all of the staff that is here today and anybody else who's joined. So I will request a motion for the consent agenda, which includes the approval of agenda and approval of the October 15 minutes. And I would like to make a change to that, at least before we make the motion of moving the Old Business Decatur Public Library pandemic response to the first thing on the agenda after the public comments.
I'll make that motion.
Any other second?
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
All right, so we'll do Amy.
Here comes Sophia, by the way.
Yes. Susan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Sophia, can you hear us? We have approved the agenda and also to move the pandemic response plan to the first thing on the agenda after public comments.
Sounds good, yes.
All right, so that motion passes or the consent agenda passes. So now we will have public comments. We'll do that.
Yeah, we do have one written, a public comment. This is from Amanda Young of Decatur, Illinois. She is a librarian here at the Decatur Public Library. Most of you know her. The comment is this, "I was on the adult reference desk for part of the day yesterday, and I see that there is a great need for computer access for our patrons. I just feel concerned about that for our patrons if we close. People were asking in person and calling too if we were closing and they were concerned they would not be able to get materials. I told them about curbside pickup just in case, but many would rather browse. I feel good about our library being a place where people want to go, but I also understand that the rise in cases is climbing. I'm sure this will be a hard decision for the board."
Thank you, Amanda.
Here comes Carl, by the way.
Thank you. So that's everybody.
Yep.
Hey, Carl. So we will move on to the pandemic response. So at this point, we do need to decide what we are going to do. So I guess I do need a motion to discuss, you know, what we are going to do. If anybody has a specific motion that they would like to present, we will take that as well.
Samantha, can I just, it's just merely a suggestion and you guys can proceed as you wish, but maybe it would be useful if the choice were binary. So between staying as is and letting library administration decide if we want to change things like hours, et cetera, et cetera, or closing the doors and letting library administration decide whether we want to provide things like curbside service and appointments for computer use and that sort of thing. I merely make the suggestion for the sake of simplicity. Certainly, the board can go into whatever detail they wish, but I think if we make that, make the choice that simple, it might, and then allow us to make the decisions as to the details that might be best for everyone.
Board team, how do we feel about that? I mean, we can go through and talk about how we feel about that. This is such a hard conversation.
I have a comment, Samantha.
Okay.
My understanding from what will take effect tomorrow from Governor Pritzker is it's that our region, the state, let's say the entire state, is kind of returning to so-called Phase Three. I mean, we're in, I think, Phase Four now.
I don't think it changes the phase.
It doesn't change the phase?
Tier Three mitigation, which is a new wrinkle in the whole plan.
Oh, so that's a new term?
Yep.
Okay, but I haven't heard, I mean, what I've heard is that, you know, there's the the impositions on restaurants and bars and things like that, but not that any other public facilities or buildings or things like that would be closing. So I guess I'm wondering from that, that, you know, if we would take the action to close, would we be, you know, an oddity that others are not doing that? Is a question that I have.
My question would be, what are other libraries doing in the area?
I can answer that one. The vast majority are moving to curbside only. There are a couple of exceptions. I believe Mohammed is going to remain open. Urbana hadn't made their decision in Peoria, hadn't made their decision. They were going to meet with their boards, I believe, today, just like us. Every other library that I can think of, Springfield, Bloomington, Normal, Champaign, Forsyth, Mount Zion, are all moving to a curbside-only model. And some of them are adding twists, like they'll make appointments for computer use or some even appointments for browsing.
Yeah, Mount Zion is having browsing appointments.
Yes, they are.
So Rick, in the recent times with library traffic, has there been, you know, as I understand, we've always had a lot of traffic coming in to use the computers? You know, some element of society that's coming in to use the computers. Has that continued to be a fair volume of patrons that have come in?
Well, the numbers are certainly down, but that's partly because we've limited the number of computers that we're using just due to spacing. But Matt, can you talk about that a little bit? Because I don't think we've had too many situations where we've had to have somebody wait, but...
No, I think we have 10 computers available right now. There is a reservation terminal that will let you sign on or make a reservation for when they're available, but that hasn't got any use. From what I've seen, there's usually like maybe one or two at the most open during the day. Unless we could probably say more on that subject.
From what I understand, there are occasions when somebody has to wait a moment, but not so much. They're doing the honor system. It's not like you have to reserve the computer and hang around for a while, but the computers are getting used. And it does sound like it's the regulars who come in that need it every day.
Amy?
Is it possible to have curbside only plus appointments for computer use? Because we know that of all of our critical services, that for some proportion of residents, that is the most urgent service.
That's what I was thinking, exactly.
That's what I was thinking too, is that we just make it by appointment and...
Yeah, I would ask that, you know, give us a few business days to roll out how we would do the the appointments, although we're ready to go on curbside anytime.
I mean, you know, look at something low-tech, like there's a signup sheet outside the door with a pencil on it, you know?
Yeah, or a sign, you know, it's just a sign saying, please call this number to make an appointment. And just to give you guys a complete picture, I've been kind of all over the place on this in the last 24 hours. I was strongly going to recommend going curbside only. I backed off that a little bit, but it's hard to, you know, when I'm, when I have to stay home for, you know, maybe 20 more days, it's hard to be telling everybody, no, I think you guys should be in the building working. But I will say, I had a conversation with the mayor a while ago. She called me and about something that'll come up later in the meeting, but while I had her on the phone, I asked what her thought was. And she said it's certainly the library board and administration's decision, but if we're asking her opinion, her opinion would be to take a pause for probably a couple of months. And when I asked what that meant, you know, she thought that things like curbside and appointments for computer use or even browsing, if we choose to go that route, it sounded like a very reasonable approach, but she just thought the doors being open might not be the best idea right now.
So would anybody like to make a motion? Would anybody like to hear from any of the staff that have joined the call? I mean, I can't guarantee that if every single person wanted to speak that we could, you know, that we could take, you know, a long time on this, but...
Well, Samantha, would such a motion, from what Rick said earlier, would it be that we, the board, are going to tell very specifically what to do? Or are we going to leave him with discretion of what to do?
We can, yeah, and that can be the motion. We can make the motion to leave the actual, like, how-to, you know, if we are going to close the doors or if we're going to keep them open and then leave the actual day-to-day, you know, how are we going to do that? With the, I mean, because I think we're all, I mean, I can't speak for every single person that hasn't talked yet, but I think we're in agreement that we would like to provide access to those people that need computers, that need copies of, you know, documents and to use like the fax machine, you know, those day-to-day things that people need. So the how-to, you know, would be left up to the actual, at the administration. So if you're good with that, I mean, then you can make the motion or someone else can make it.
I would make a motion to do what you just said, but I apologize for it not being very articulate motion.
So the motion, I guess, would be that we would, why? I do not want to put words in your mouth, so that we would keep, or we would go to curbside with whatever services that are deemed
Essential.
Essential.
Essential by administration.
And what I would ask is if there were just a date added of when we would go curbside only. I mean, we're ready to go. And we've got some communications ready, but, you know, we could even potentially go as soon as tomorrow, but...
I think that'd be hard for people who are already planning to come, to just shut the doors. I don't know if Monday would be, I mean, I feel like Monday would be enough time, but...
Yeah, and regardless, we're going to be closed Saturday because I'm in prep for this. I've already told folks that the division has to rearrange their schedules because my full expectation was that we would be, that we would be doing that, so...
So Greg, was that accurate, the motion?
From my point of view, yes.
Okay, so do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, so we will do roll call. So Susan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Okay, and Samantha, yes. So the motion passes to go to curbside with the additional services as deemed necessary on Monday. So horrible.
We need to add the by appointment aspect, but...
They can determine that. I think that was the...
Yeah, we will get that going. It's just, that'll take, that'll take a little bit of planning and communication, but I think we can get it going fairly quickly.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, the main thing is just for us to know whether, you know, it was going to be just doors open and anybody can come in or looking at some kind of restriction. So once we know that, now that we know that, we can make our plans for the by appointment stuff. We've got curbsides already ready to go. You know, we're good with that.
I did it this week, so it was great, so... Okay, well, if anybody, you guys can all stay for, if you want. Obviously, it's an open meeting, but we will move on to the city librarians report.
Well, did we approve the minutes? I'm sorry.
It was in the...
Oh, that was, that's right, it was in the consent agenda, my bad. You know, yet another weird month. In October, I had several meetings with ILA Awards Committee. We did our, you know, awards session at the Illinois Library Association Conference. We did it by Zoom for the first time ever, and in spite of rehearsals and great planning, we still had many technological glitches in it. But it was overall, it was a pretty good, pretty good experience. From the 20th through the 22nd, I attended the ILA Annual Conference, as did Carol Zeiss and Alyssa Henkel and Samantha Carroll. We had, I kept, I've had a lot of informal virtual meetings with colleagues around Central Illinois and the area. Us county, us directors in the county get together fairly regularly on Zoom and compare notes and then some of the bigger libraries around Central Illinois, we do the same. And it's been, it's been pretty helpful to see how other libraries are approaching all of this. You know, as far as numbers go, again, I don't know how much that they actually tell us at this point, but it's interesting that, you know, use of, you know, circulating electronic materials continues to grow, 18% of the... We had a 13% increase in overall database use. So electronic content overall was up 28%, meaning that circulation was down only 14%, which, if you look at our, our traffic, our foot traffic, you know, down 43%. And library usage of, usage of library materials isn't down that much. So we're finding ways to reach our public, and that is gratifying. I'm glad that we're able to do that. And who knows whether this is, you know, maybe it's a harbinger of how things are going to be in the future. It may be that that shift we've been hearing about for 20 years is finally, due to a pandemic, beginning to come to fruition. That shift from, from hard copy to electronic. Other interesting numbers that I, or numbers that I thought were interesting at least were on, let's see, programs. We had... Yeah, actually, that wasn't what I was, that wasn't what I was looking at. We're on the way up on virtual programming, but it's still not, it's still not what we hope that it will be going forward. If we look at like the 12-month trend, we're looking at a 26% decrease in overall use of the collection. So that's comparing November of 2019 through October of 2020 to November 2018 to October 2019. But that includes, as Carol just pointed out, eight months of a pandemic. So again, I'm not sure if there's anything that we can draw from that that is useful. The only thing that I'm thinking is a possibility is that that shift to more of an emphasis on electronic materials is happening. Happy to take any questions.
I think I just, I wanted to make some comments at least. I think the videos are fantastic, like from, like all, like Mr. John, Amanda, Susan, like, and Alyssa, like, I've watched all of them that are available on YouTube, so I, they're so fun. They just make me smile and they're just silly stories. And then they include them in my book stack, so I get to also see the pictures of them. So, and I did attend the Dennis School thing pro after, like, I didn't actually join the... So, and that was so interesting because I actually went to Dennis School, so of course that's... But I just wanted to say, like, what we're doing is really cool and it's engaging me. And there were quite a few people on there, it seemed like, I mean, at least who I could see on the, from the recording, but... But I think that's really cool that we can, you know, engage some different people and...
The raw number of how many people we're reaching is much higher than the number in the report. Because the number in the report, there's very specific boundaries that we have to follow, and that has gone from these gaudy figures that we were initially reporting to much smaller because, you know, because of the parameters that the state set on us. But we're reaching a lot more people than are in that report.
Yeah, no, and I think that's amazing. I think it's, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys because like you're making my life easier, you're making, you know, and you're making patrons' lives easier too. So just by offering the services and programs and things like that, so that's my comment. So guess if there is no other questions, I'll move on to the Division head reports, which would start with Robert. Yeah, mute.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. Real quickly, I have a couple of areas that I want to cover real quick. One's admin, so Betty, Joe and I participated in interviewing of the new, well, the position, and this fairly new, it's an administrative secretary, which is different from what we had before. And it's been restructured and with the restructuring, it will, there'll be a significant savings with the new person that we have bringing on board for the department. And, excuse me, we just finished 95% of the annual appeal of letters that were to go out, and then the lion's share of that was done basically by Betty Jo. And she's worked with, and we had a lot of help from PRS and circ staff, stuffing envelopes and making flyers and what have you. Currently, we're looking, yes, we're very happy about that. Currently, we're looking at the evaluations, annual evaluation, trying to get those out to staff, excuse me, to the managers so they can start the evals to the staff. Some have already started. I'm reviewing the disaster plan draft. We've been working on it for a while, but there are some things that we probably need to add, and especially now with the pandemic, we definitely need to look at that section, review it. I also, I attended an online digital infrastructure access and skills analysis panel. I was a part of that panel. It was the state panel. And they had another library, well, Keegan Library was a part of it, and they had some more state organizations that were a part of that. And basically, it was talking about digital infrastructure literacy and how the library kind of helps in those areas. So for circulation, we also just completed this circulation interviews. And the circulation page that we hired, it will be replacing the page that actually just went up to become a clerk, taking someone's place that was retired. So in addition, we're also looking to restructure the routing clerk that was, well, we've actually already started plans. The routing clerk, they're retired, maybe make two more positions, and there'll be a big savings in salary there too. The person that we hired is Hannah Perry, and hopefully she'll start on Monday. The, as far as the rest of the circulation, we've basically been working, you know, checking things in, taking things out. We're still under quarantine. We're still quarantining items. We went from seven days to five days. Illinois Heartland's lead, they decided that we really only need to do those five days, so we went to five days. Currently, the, actually, I went back and I did some numbers because I was kind of curious about how people are coming in the library. And we still average about, I check out about 3,000 items a week. It's pretty, I mean, it's pretty fantastic. So there's a lot of items that's still going out, people coming in to get materials. And even though, you know, we started out in July, it was, it was a, it looked like everybody was just glad the library opened. We had a lot. It went down a little bit, but we still, we're still checking out quite a bit a week. And last month, we had a few less patrons check out, 1,583. This is not coming in the library, it was actual checkouts. This month, it got a little bit higher, 1,588. So we, to end this up, we recently got our hotspots or new hotspots, so we have 35. Carol and Tech Services, they have them all prepped and ready for circulation. So as soon as we get the cases, we'll be ready to get those out. And currently, we have more in supply than we have in demand. So if anyone wants a hotspot, now's the time to reserve it.
So we want to hear. All right, if there's no questions for Robert, we will move on to Becky.
Okay, so I'm glad you went to the Zoom Dennis School thing there, Sam. The video worked, everything was fine?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful. So that was Tuesday, and that was done by Gary Geisler. And we had, as far as I can tell, we topped out at 17 people. But Gary seems to think we had more than that, but my number is 17 for it. He is coming back on December 15th, quote-unquote, coming back through Zoom to do another talk for us, December 15th at 7:00 PM, and it'll be on the History of Firestone in Decatur.
Cool.
Currently, I'm scanning a whole bunch of photos for him to use in his presentation. And he was in on Wednesday to kind of pick out what he needed, so... The thing is, we've been doing appointments since November 2nd, and I have had, I think, a total of about nine appointments, most of which have been one person. He was a researcher in the middle of, he was knee-deep in some research when we closed local history down to just appointments, so he has been coming in and out about three times a week. Of course, not right now, because he got exposed to COVID, so he couldn't come in for a little while. He is negative, so he'll eventually be back at some point. And then last month, we did have 19 in-depth requests. We've already hit that mark for this month. So people are understanding that they can't come in here and going ahead and asking us questions and asking for in-depth research from us to do, us to do it for them. So that's going to be a lot, a lot bigger number this month, most definitely.
That's great. And we did the, and you had the, what was, I don't remember his name, but he did the cemeteries and...
That wasn't me, that was PRS.
Oh, that was PRS, okay.
That's PRS, yeah. Anything, PRS and I and ASC have a working relationship where if it's local, I'll do it, but if it's like a kind of roundabout history thing, now they'll do it.
I think that was what I was confused about because it was like, he talked about graveyards that are local, but he also talked about where, so...
Yeah, so because it was an overarching and not just local, it was handed off to PRS.
Got it. All right, cool. So Alyssa, you're next. Just told one of your things that you talked about.
That's okay, I've got other stuff. It's almost like we were planning to go curbside only. Casey has been working on a curbside video with help from PRS staff, and we're going to push that, we were doing that already because we wanted more people to utilize that service. Recently, we were talking about the Flipster magazine where you could get periodicals online, which we didn't have the first time that we were closed. And somebody, I believe it was Rick, had the great idea that if we could somehow figure out who had been checking out periodicals once we reopened, we could target them with a campaign. And so the very, maybe that very day, Carol, you had supplied a report of those patrons who had checked out periodicals, and I passed that on to Tabitha, and she created a campaign and Patreon point that has already gone out saying you don't have to miss out on your magazines, you can still get them through Flipster. Also, Tabitha has been working with Assisted Living Facilities, ALF for short, that's kind of fun. She, they're creating a traveling library so that we can actually check out a bag of books to the assisted living facilities, and they can have it for a month, possibly two months. It's their very own curbside service as it were, but it's under an institutional card instead of individuals so that we can actually send something to the seniors. And it's possible that we can do that for other institutions as well. We'll be working on that soon. In my report, you would have seen that John and Amanda have been working with DPS 61. John has been doing video tours for the Life Skill John has been doing video tours for the life skills um classes at both Eisenhower and MacArthur. The really cool thing is that the parents are bringing their kids in afterwards. So um, we've seen some familiar faces. Ridiculous, when we used to go to Harris, we um met a lot of these kids when they were young. And now they're teenagers and they're coming to the library and checking out books with their families based upon these great videos. And John and Amanda did um a video tour for dentist school as well. We're already preparing our next big thing. Uh, folklore has kind of taken its course and we are now going to start providing live storytimes. There should be a little bit more um openness with publishers in doing that. And we thought it was time for a change, whether we're open or not. Uh, live storytimes are the next thing in the mix. Alex has been working on making take and makes more streamlined. So that we can do those curbside very easily. And we also have the teacher and parrot bundles, which we're going to make those curbside pickup easier.
And. A great.
I'm glad to hear it. You utilize it a lot, but uh, everybody's very happy with those. Um, and here's something that just kind of came up out of the blue. Uh, we have something called Gale Virtual Reference Library. Back before two thousand thirteen, we purchased a hundred and nineteen E reference books. It was very expensive and it's equally expensive to keep those um updated. Because you know with uh encyclopedias, you get new editions regularly and you have to pay the same cost every time new ones come out, just because they were e-content that didn't change. But Gale has finally listened to libraries and we can now do it via subscription. So already live, prepared for being shut down, uh, we have over three hundred and forty titles now. So we went from a hundred and nineteen to over three hundred and forty and they're all the newest edition. And every year they will be updated for a much minimum cost. Very excited about that. And it's already live, so you'll be seeing marketing about that. And the last thing is currently, um, I'm looking into seeing some things for elementary school kids and younger kindergarten readiness that will assist parents and teachers during lockdown. And um, also an EDI collection, since EDI is so important right now, purchasing it for e-content. It'll be great for teachers, professors and us. And I, that's, that's enough.
That's fantastic.
Hey, I want, I want to just briefly talk about a blast from the past here. I got an email today from uh Dr. Juanita Morris. And uh, she was, she partnered with us on uh Girls Who Code. We had a Girls Who Code group here. She shared an email from a former girls uh participant in Girls Who Code at the library, who is now a freshman uh in computer science program at Mizzou University. Uh, won some, won some awards uh and uh doing great. So that was the goal, you know, to, one of the goals was to get more girls interested in in computer science. And so uh, I feel, I just want to share that because it came out of blue today and I really needed some good news.
That's fantastic. I love that. All right, Matt, you are up.
Currently, I'm working on getting a virtual private network set up so staff can connect to our internal network from outside of the building. It's coming along. I've got some. Problem. I've got to research. Uh, Chris is busy with help calls. He's. Recently, we've had several computers that don't want to cooperate, so he's been on the phone with Dale Support. He's also got all the laptops ready to go uh for staff if they need one for remote working. And is doing our part for the environment. We recycled three pallets of old dead computers, printers, monitors. As part of the city recycling program. So.
Great.
Pretty much it.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And then Carol.
Alyssa didn't mention this, but we withdrew thirty-three ninety items. Three thousand three hundred and ninety items. So um, that's a lot of weeding and that's a very good number. Because usually we do about thirteen to sixteen hundred. Um, and I do just a little bit of stuff on the backend. Um, so TS added just a little over fourteen hundred items, which is pretty close to an average for us. Baker and Taylor is um sending us materials in a rather lumpy way. So we recently have gotten boxes that were packed in August. And so we do have a lot of boxes sitting here. So if they were to get another supply interruption, we have plenty of work to do. Um, I I have one cataloger working at home. Um, most of the time she comes in a couple of times a week. That's working really well for her. And everybody else, it's pretty much at the same level of work and productivity um as they were before. So um, we don't have any flashy new programs to offer, but we are getting the job done.
Awesome. Thank you, Carol. All right, any questions for any of the division heads? All right, then we'll move on to the PPPR committee and Michael ran that one. So.
And I don't have the, I don't have the thing right here in front of me. I'm sorry. I forgot to print it out. I'm so, I'm sorry.
Would it help if I sent you another copy right quick, Michael?
Yeah, you can. Uh, I mean.
The first one.
I'll order you here. I could just share that. I could just share.
Here, hold on. I I can, I think I can pull it up here. Right?
He's got it.
Okay, okay. Hmm. Well, we, this is the collection uh development policy. And this is what we um, this is what. Is this the one that we're recommending that we're gonna, that we vote on today?
Yeah, all of the ones that we did were.
So it's, I don't know if you guys have taken a look over it um or had the opportunity to take a look at it. We went over it and.
Rick, did you want to call out the um?
The changes.
The changes.
Yeah, we made uh my. My mic on, I can't even tell from what I'm sharing. Okay. Yeah, we made some changes to sort of uh strengthen the language about diversity uh that we would regularly review the collection to ensure that it reflects the diversity. I need to put a period here, but uh, uh, we also uh talked a little bit about um. How we, how we handle uh requests for reconsideration of library materials and we changed that. Gave people uh some, some more options on on how to approach that. Not simply you have to do a book report and tell us that you understand the themes and 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 everything on it, just uh the the. We allowed a more informal approach to that. And essentially, aside from that, it remains pretty much unchanged. We got rid of the forms. Then we're attached to it and we're going to work on, we're going to work on an online way. Matt doesn't know this yet, maybe he's gone. But uh, we're going to work on a uh, an online way to uh, to make uh requests for uh purchase from the library.
Okay, so we need.
We're going to need a motion to accept it.
You can make the motion.
I can make the motion. Well, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to accept it as presented.
Second.
All right, so we'll go Susan.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Sophia. Sophia.
We might have lost her. Did we lose her?
Says she's there, but she's on mute.
Oh.
Oh, she's not. Oh.
They must have knocked her off.
I was yelling yes.
You're on mute.
I was trying to close the door, but I was yelling yes.
All right, and then Carl.
If I have the old.
Carl, would you say?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
That. Yeah, that passes. The, the next one is the art and artifacts acquisition and display policy. Rick, you want to say something about this?
Yeah, we, 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 we don't recommend any changes. Basically, it says if somebody wants to give us a, a, a. A piece of art that we're going to display permanently in the, in the library, that uh, the board has to okay that before we do it.
So if anybody, does anybody have any questions or comments here?
I, I just have a question. You know, on the second floor, um, on the, on the wall to the south of the stairwell. Um, there's always a lot of uh art exposed there or present there. Are, are those on display? Or are those actual gifts that have been given?
Those are temporary, uh, they're in rotating. Those are temporary and rotating. Uh, and we have an agreement, uh.
Okay.
Longstanding agreement with uh, uh, I, I always forget the name of that studio.
Barn Colony?
Five ten.
Okay.
Gallery five ten.
Yeah, it's Gallery five ten.
Okay, and and there's a separate, as this one says, there's a separate policy practice that um, that uh deals with those things.
Right, short term, right.
Okay.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to accept the policy as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, any other further discussion? Okay, Amanda or Samantha, do you want to do the roll call?
Yep, Susan.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Sophia.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
I have an older, I have an old agenda. Do we do a personnel update? Or is that, was that?
To the end, that's a little, the next one's the patron.
What, what, I, I'm looking at a different, I must be looking at a different um. Uh, personnel meeting, a PPPR meeting. So what is the next?
It's a. Yeah, it's a, it's a patron behavior.
Oh, right, 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 right. Right. Oh, well, I'm trying to think of what we.
It, this one, the, 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 the rules for patrons, we didn't change anything. What we did was we added language about uh to to guide. Uh, library administration and and staff a little bit more on, on how we go about the process of uh. Excuse me, banning or barring a patron from the, the library. So this, everything below uh, you can't carry firearms is new. Um, we've, we've talked about it for at least two meetings. Um, it might have been three. And this is what, this is where we landed. So, and this is what, this is what the committee voted to uh recommend for adoption. I, I, I can talk about the high points if you want, but it.
Now, why don't you?
It allows. It allows a little more uh leeway for uh. Division heads, for instance, will be able to to impose a one-week ban without uh, without uh going through the director. Uh, it allows the director to uh implement up to a one-year ban and only the board can uh extend that. Uh, it, 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 it. Codifies a process for uh patrons who are banned to uh issue a grievance or or request a hearing with the board. Uh, we, we, we want it to be in writing, but we, but we realized that not everybody's able to do that. So we did allow for exceptions. Uh, for oral requests if they can't. But it, it also, it kind of gives us a more of a step approach uh rather than uh me just kind of uh, you know. Treating every single case differently and and trying to figure it out. Uh, it gives a, it gives a, some, some guidelines on how long you'll get. Banned for X infractions, if that makes sense.
Some uniformity, right?
Right, right.
Yep, equity, yep.
Yeah, okay. Questions, folks?
Just, just one I have. Uh, at the present time, is there anyone? I don't have to tell names, but is there anyone who is banned from the library?
Yeah, oh yeah, so we've got a whole list.
We got a whole list?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and and it's not something I, I, this has happened over the years and and in the past, we've uh, we've issued permanent bans. Uh, the, the uh, the thinking in the library community has changed a lot on that. I still have my doubts that only, you know, not having the ability to do a permanent ban is not the best thing. But what this does is allows the board to extend it beyond one year if they feel that it's, it's warranted rather than the library director.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, which Illinois statute says it's the, that the board is the, is the, is who is allowed to. Limit somebody's right to use the, the library and that they can delegate the day-to-day to that to the library director.
All right, so do the motion.
So do we, uh, do we make the motion? I'm going to make the motion that we accept the um. Uh, patron ban behavior policy as presented.
Second, I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, so we'll do roll call. Susan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
And Carl?
Yes.
Thank you. That was passes.
Okay, so.
You got it up now?
Yeah, I got it now. So the, the city librarian performance evaluation process, Susan, you want to talk to this?
Um, yes, we um actually have a, a form ready to go and I, I'm not sure. Um, Samantha, I read your email just right before we came on today.
Yeah, I know.
So I, I'm not sure whether this needs to be presented to the whole board and approved or whether this can go to PPR. And approve the, the uh, the form and the process and then go to the whole board for um. For, you know.
That's what we do.
Input.
That's what we'll, yeah, that's what we'll do. So the next PPR, PPPR meeting.
Right. And and we decided we're not going to meet in December, then we're um.
Hmm, that's, yeah, we can, we, we can talk about that with the PPPR, PPPR committee.
But kind of the process is then um, the evaluation will go out to the entire board for their comments. And uh, then Michael and I will kind of collate all of it together and um. I believe Samantha then will sit with Rick and talk about it. At that time also, recommendations for salary changes will be made. And then as Samantha uh goes over his review with him, they will set some goals for the, the following year. We have a goal section on it, but it probably won't be, be completed this year because apparently there was supposed to be a goals committee last year and that didn't happen. So uh, Rick really didn't have any specific written down roles or goals. So um, that, you know, probably will be left blank this year, but hopefully next year there'll be some.
Feedback, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty much the same process as we've had before.
Probably, yeah.
Same process. It's a different form.
But we just want to, we also just want to formalize it, like have a specific time of year, you know, that kind of thing so that it doesn't get missed again, kind of thing. I mean, we had a lot going on last, last year.
Yeah, no kidding, with so many people leaving and all this sort of stuff. Okay, Rick, personnel update?
Here we go. Uh, Robert covered most of it. Uh, we're, we're in the midst of uh, of interviewing for library's uh administrative secretary. We've got a couple more uh candidates to interview. And uh, you know, then we have to decide, do we wait, you know, uh, you know, to get somebody in the building. But uh, but we've got some good candidates and uh, uh, Robert said he hired a page who's starting Monday. Uh, but you know, we could still use her. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll have things for her to do. So um. Uh, that's, that's where we're, we're making some, you know, we're, we're looking at some internal um. There'll be some internal promotions uh coming or there's at least that opportunity available for a couple of people.
Okay, um, equity, diversity and inclusion. Robert?
Uh, I don't really have anything to report um for this meeting. Um, basically, I've, I've contacted. I contacted a couple of the consultants and uh, they're swamped right now. I mean, it's, it's been a, it was a historic election and there's been a lot of um. You know, since then, I, they've been just getting busy, the guys who I've talked to. So um, that being said, you know, still, I still need to re, reach out to a couple of members. And because I'm still, we're wanting a couple of bios so we can put that and finish that together. But um, next meeting we'll have more report and we'll have a little bit better progress. I will.
Yeah, thank you, Robert.
All right, I don't think there's any other, right?
All right, that's it for us.
All right, move to Amy.
Okay, um, first thing is a normal check register. We had our usual good discussion about um expenditures. You'll see a lot of um items about. Materials, um, the collection. So that's one of the main things. Uh, one of the main items was the EBSCO payment for this Flipster product that Elisa talked, Elisa talked about. Giving people remote access to some of the major magazines. Uh, the finance committee would, would recommend, recommends approval of the check register.
Okay, I need a second.
I second.
All right, we'll do roll call, Susan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Carl? Carl? All right, that passes.
Then we'll go on to the October results. Um, we review as an information item two sets of numbers. One is what's actually happened, and in October, we're ten months through the year, eighty-three percent, so that's kind of the, the benchmark number. And then Rick also presents, um, where he believes the year is gonna end up. So just to quickly review the, the actual results, and there's some complexities in revenue, in terms of the timing, but some of the key controllable variables, obviously the payroll and benefits, and there were, we're behind the running rate. Rick, if you go back to the actual, so we're eighty percent versus eighty-three percent of the year. Uh, library materials are slightly behind, but as you heard, um, just a minute ago, they've got boxes of books that they're working on. Some of our, the, uh, expenditures in professional services have been running behind budget. So, when we come down to the bottom line, um, we're looking at uh, both revenue and expense being better than our eighty-three percent. So then we go on to the projection for the following year, I mean, for the full year, which is this number. And a couple of the major things are state replacement tax now appears it's gonna be less than budget. The, um, the grant is not gonna materialize, but the expenses don't either. So ninety-two thousand dollars unfavorable to budget, but then when we look at expenditures, um, for personnel, we're a hundred and six favorable to budget. And then on the bottom line, that translates, uh, there's miscellaneous things that are also favorable, that translates to a hundred and thirty-one favorable. So, the projection then is that we are favorable to budget. Revenue minus expense is gonna be better than we expected by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Obviously, things can change last two months, but, um, that's been a pretty consistent, we're pretty consistently pointing at a better surplus going forward, and that's super important for the next thing. So, the way fund accounting works, it's very bizarre, kind of, it's its own thing, but fund accounting, um, at the end of the year, this simply rolls into, um, fund balance. So, this year, we have a hundred and fifty more dollars in fund balance. Think of that in your own accounts, as at the end of the year, you're able to put money into your savings account. Um, just, you know, it's, it's in your savings account. That then is available for operations. So then we'll go on to the budget, where we're going to take action. I can say in terms of the process, and, you know, feel free to jump in here, but we've looked at it twice. Um, Greg has been very much a part of those discussions. Greg and Rick have worked together to incorporate some of the discussions that we made, and some of the, uh, comments that Greg felt were important to make sure that, that this is, uh, acceptable to everybody. Real estate taxes are flat. Um, PPRT is expected to be less. Um, personnel is down slightly, and I think that, that's kind of implied and what was discussed earlier about some opportunities to re-figure jobs and replace longtime workers with, um, with newer workers. Um, there've been some, um, the city is, has, um, put a lower number on health insurance, um, because their expectation is they're going to be able to use some of their reserves on that. So, the bottom line, the budget presented for our approval does show a deficit of fifty thousand dollars. So essentially, think about that as we did a hundred and fifty thousand dollars better this year than we expected, or that's the number, the, the year-end number is gonna be in that sort of range, and we're using a portion of that to cover current operations in twenty-twenty-one, which also is probably going to have at least some months of pandemic-related changes to operations. So, the finance committee would recommend that the whole board approve this, and I don't know if Rick or Greg wanna add any more comments.
I, I just very quickly wanna point out that we've actually reduced our expenditures for next year by one percent. Um, it's, uh, the, the, the issue is on the revenue side, and, uh, when, you know, we're, we're seeing a two percent reduction in, in, in revenue, and it's, it's, uh, exclusively really in state monies here. It's this line right here. PPRT, it's personal property replacement tax, uh, and Greg can do a much better job of explaining exactly what that is, but I can tell you that the, uh, the expected, uh, change in that revenue is a seventy-nine thousand dollar decline, and that's what makes the difference.
You know, the, the, uh, you know, the, the state of Illinois hasn't had a always good track record with, you know, providing the revenue it needs to provide to local governments. And, and there are two things that the state has had the ability to tap into, to solve their issues on budgetary matters and revenue distributions and so on. One is the income tax distribution, and the second is this PPRT, it's personal property replacement tax. Effectively, it's the old, old, old inventory tax that used to be charged to businesses, uh, operating the state. Um, and, 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 and the, 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 the lower projection for next year is because the, the, all the information we have is that they're gonna tap into that next year to solve some of their budget deficit problems. Uh, we hope it doesn't happen, but, so we're preparing a budget on a cautious basis. Uh, and, and really the, you know, when we looked at the budget, the fifty thousand dollar shortfall, uh, I mean, it's, it's, in, in my opinion, it's pandemic-related. If we didn't have the pandemic, we would have a higher revenue stream from this PPRT, a higher expectation, and, uh, and, and we would be, you know, committing a balanced budget. This, this, the library has developed cash reserves over, uh, the last several years. The library's in good financial condition, and putting in the bank in a savings account is what, is what you need in order to get through hard times. We're in a hard time.
I like what you said at the meeting, at the finance meeting, that you said you trust Rick, that he's gone through every line, and he's determined that he has captured the expenses as he sees them currently. So, I like that explanation as well.
So I as well would recommend approval of, 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 of this budget, and if there was a motion on the floor for Amy, I second it.
I don't think we can vote on this, because it was discussion. We didn't have it, we didn't.
I'd put it as discussion.
Twenty-twenty-one budget proposal discussion?
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's binding. Greg, do we need to vote on it before, uh, the December, uh, meeting?
I thought that's why we didn't make it an action item from.
Yeah, I mean, let's say, when's, when's our next meeting?
That's my, that's my, that's my error. I, I intended to make it, uh, an action item. I don't know that that's, that part is binding, uh, to be honest with you.
And, and, and actually the.
I mean, it's on the agenda, so.
I mean, for what it's worth, I mean, our schedule right now is, is the city council is going to, vote on budget adoption. There'll be both a public hearing at the December seventh city council meeting, and a vote of adoption of the budget at the December seventh city council meeting. So, I, I don't know if it's necessarily incumbent that, um, I mean, the, the budget we present, as long as it's this budget, I, I don't know if, if, I defer to you Samantha and others, if we as a board have to approve it prior to going before the city council. The city council's approval is kind of, kind of perfunctory, because, you know, we're the governing board for the library.
Sure. So I would say, I mean.
I would, no, just to make it clear that we have looked at it, and given our blessing, can we take the discussion item as being just advisory in the sense that it's on the agenda that we could take action?
Yes.
I think you can. It's.
I was gonna propose that.
There's nothing required in, in open meetings, Zach, for us to put action or, or discussion. It's, it's merely merely to guide, it's merely to guide the, the members of the board.
Okay, so we will do, um, a roll call vote on that, because we have Amy as the, the motion, and then Greg is the second, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so Susan? You're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Samantha, yes. I think I haven't said yes, but I say yes to all of them. Um, so there's no other discussion? Is that right? Okay, then we'll move on to.
Can we, Samantha, come back? Can, another discussion? Okay, um, you know, this is something we talked at the PPRT meeting, Amy, I'm sorry, at the, at the finance committee meeting, Amy, and, and that is, it's, it's, it was kind of expressed by me as kind of a personal opinion as a board member, but, you know, once again, with the, uh, the budget, the majority of the revenue that the library receives comes from the tax levy, and once again, the tax levy that's going before the council for approval is flat, flat for the library. The tax levy will go up for the city, uh, because of annexation, because of assessed value growth prediction that we predict, um, and, you know, some other matters, but the library number stays flat. And long-term sustainability of, of the library, I mean, there's inflation in expenses every year. I mean, what do we have to do? And I think this is a discussion that we as a board need to have, but, you know, does it, does it begin with us starting to lobby council members? Uh, or, or whatever discussion we need to do to, how do we approach city council about future funding of the library? That's my comment.
That's a good point.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that, and one of the things we talked about was, um, you know, January and February, having a more in-depth discussion, because there are obviously a couple of opposing forces. One is, you know, inflation and costs going up. The other one is declining population, so we have to, you know, we have to balance those two things, and it definitely is worthy of expanded discussion, and, um, thank you for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it's, it's something that we just, we need to figure out a way to approach it and figure out what we actually need before we say we need.
Yes.
Yeah, but I think that should definitely be put on our agenda.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I agree. Move on to the foundation, which it says Rick's name, but it also says my name, now that I look at it. Do you want me to talk about it? Michael was there too.
And Michael's there too. I would, whoever, uh, you're actually, you guys are actually on the board, so.
Yeah, so we had the, um, foundation meeting on October twenty-sixth. We just talked about the annual appeal, which is coming up. Um, so I would recommend, uh, when you get your cards, returning them.
Write your check.
Yep, write your check. Um, and, uh, we talked about what we would request for those, um, you know, to do with that money. So, we're trying to think of specific goals of actual, like, you know, actual needs of the library. Um, Rick presented a digital sign, that would go out front, um, on Franklin, I think, right?
Yep.
Um, and then we also discussed, um, possibly using, if we have any additional funds, um, using it towards, um, EDI, funding the EDI. But we weren't sure if that was part of the charter, so that is part of, um, something that they were looking at. We, they. And we talked about changing the bylaws, which we have another meeting coming up in a couple weeks, so. Any questions?
Laws of the foundation?
Yeah, foundation.
Okay.
All right, if no questions, we'll move on to the friends, and Rick went to that meeting.
Yeah, we, uh, the first, uh, first time in six years, uh, we didn't have, we didn't ask them for anything. They're not, uh, and they're not, you know, they're kind of in limbo, uh, and, you know, at some point, they've got to examine, their, their stock of books is growing and growing and growing, but they're not selling any books. Uh, I mean, to speak of, they are doing, they have met with a couple of book dealers and sold, and sold some books, but, uh, you know, they're gonna have to figure that out, uh, uh, because at, at, at some point, you've gotta get rid of some of that inventory, um, so, uh, but they've, and they're looking to hire a, uh, a new treasurer. They hired one earlier in the year, but she and her, she and her husband relocated, but, uh, it'll be much easier now. See, Amy's saying she's gotta go. Uh, it'll be much easier now for the next person, because, uh, the, the last treasurer they hired just really got the processes and procedures in, in order, made a, made a, a, a procedure handbook, and it should be much easier to, to, uh, for the next person to do. So, and they've already interviewed a couple people.
Okay, cool.
Don't just, you, you, you use the word limbo? What do you mean by that?
Oh, well, they're not having any sales. Uh, the, the, they're not having any book sales, but they're still getting donations of books. Uh, so, uh, they're just kind of in limbo until they, you know, uh, until they can do that again, but they.
That prevents them from?
Making more money.
No, there's no revenue, uh, for them essentially, but then again, there, there are very few expenses, because, uh, typically what we're requesting is for, uh, support for programs.
Right.
And, uh, that, those, you know, are further and fewer between now.
So because they, they have fewer, less revenue, they have less money to give to you programs?
Oh, but they've got plenty of money in the bank. So it's like, if we, if we were to come ask you, it's not that they, it's not that they can't afford what we're asking them for, it's just that, uh, right now they're in limbo in the sense that their, their inventory is growing.
Okay.
Uh, weekly, and in some weeks by a lot, yet they're not selling anything, so, uh, they're not ma, making any, they're not actively making any revenue to speak of right now.
Okay.
But their expenses are pretty low too.
Okay, anything else? All right, I H L S, Rick?
Uh, I don't have a report right now, uh, but they are continuing, uh, uh, delivery, and we'll decide whether we're going to, Robert and I will talk about that tomorrow, and we will decide whether we're gonna continue to participate in it, but they are continuing with their delivery services throughout this.
I'm very grateful for that. Personally. Um, okay, um, so we've already done the old business, new business, board openings.
Uh, yeah, I did get a call from, uh, Mayor Mo Wolf, uh, this afternoon, and she will be, uh, nominating, uh, I think I, go ahead and say Kate Wrigley, uh, to serve on the board. She's an attorney who loves the library, so, and I've got her contact information. I'll be getting in touch with her soon.
So does, does that last nine?
It gives us eight.
Okay.
I need one more, ten. All right, um, I don't think there's any other new business, right? Sorry, I know. Um, and serving our public, we already did that, thankfully, and so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All right.
Second.
All right, Michael, and Susan?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, Amy, oh, Amy's gone. Uh, Greg?
Yes.
Carl? Sophia?
Yes.
And Samantha, yes. All right, most, or, uh, meeting. And Samantha, yes. All right, most, or, uh, meetings adjourned at five forty-one.